Our role call, we do have one number. Monica is zooming in with us this evening. And Heather and Emily is going to just be a little bit late. And we have our new student representative here. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, there are. I guess we can do this well. So we have actually three adjustments. We have to have, I want to add a discussion about the school budget. Need to have a discussion about busing. And those will be five one, five two. And then we have to add a nomination for Ashley Illinois for high school social studies. Those are, we have printed new agendas for the board, so they should be on there.
Thank you. Do you have a agenda for the audience?
No, I'm sorry, but calling this out, I didn't think we were going to be done.
Yes, can you have an updated agenda that I can follow? Two words out happens. Since the last chance. For those who are in the audience, Megan is going to condone some of the updated agendas. If you want, I can just drop them if you can down. Thank you for the updated minutes, Jim. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes at the Winter School Board Meeting of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four as written or with corrections.
I'll move.
Is that good? Any discussion on the data? And is that a yes or no?
Yeah, thank you.
There's a four zero vote with our one school representative. Thank you. You'll go ahead and enter into our public comments section. Are there any people in the audience or on Zoom who'd like to speak? Please step up to the microphone. Breaker.
Sorry, I thought it was great.
Oh, it's pretty good. And go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yes, me.
Is the mic still on?
Yes, he was, he used to have it on switch. Sorry about that.
I'm just going to read from my phone and I apologize. It's wondering hearing your voice reverb. I feel like, good evening. My name is Wesley Hakey. For those of you who don't know me, I am the father of three girls. All three of them came to us by a different path, biologically, from foster care, which led to adoption, and lastly, kinship fostering. I may not have had a hand in bringing each of them into this world, but I am thankful to be their dad as much as it is my honor to protect them. I love to be involved and look for ways to serve within our community and at school, which allows me to get to know their friends, teachers, and the other adults making an impact in their lives. We relocated to Winter solely because of the reputation in the schools. As my wife grew up here and always wanted her kids to get the same experience as an opportunity she received. Tonight, I am speaking on the way I've been treated, excluded, and discriminated against by Joelyne Rangel and how the culture she has cultivated in turn.
Just one second, point more, just for reference. In our public comment section, we just, you can't use people's names.
Oh, I didn't know that. I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I will, sorry, I apologize. And in turn, it's been allowed to thrive. On multiple occasions, I've inquired about parent involvement and being able to have lunch with our kids. I was told no originally due to COVID. Then the next time I asked, I was told no due to the pipe bursting and having too many strangers in the building, which I understand about the pipe, but I am no stranger. I volunteer every Monday, serving breakfast with the breakfast cart via the PTA. One morning, my daughter and I were approached and were told that, I apologize. That Emily need to stay in her classroom, I apologize. My daughter needed to stay in her classroom and she wasn't allowed to hang out in the hallway. Mind you, I understand there may be more work, but school hasn't started yet. And if there is no work to be done, what is the harm? The response I got the next time I inquired was that I need to check with the superintendent's office. When I contacted the superintendent's office, they told me that it was at the discretion of the principal. I then called, left her voicemail. The following morning, while I was waiting for school to open, I was approached along with my daughter and was told, Mr. Hakey, I got your message. And it is my job to fight injustices on behalf of the children. And it wouldn't be fair to allow you to come and eat lunch with your daughter when other parents can't due to their schedules or commitments. So it's easier this way. I responded, I would love for my dad to be able to have lunch with me and my friends when I was younger. And I look forward to making those memories with my daughter. I was then told that I could inquire about volunteering in the classroom and to read aloud to the kids, but I couldn't reach my own daughter. After that, I stopped asking because I knew they didn't care and didn't even want to entertain looking at it from our perspective. And in a separate incident, when my wife was meeting with my daughter's previous first grade teacher, that teacher lied about our daughter and she later admitted to and started to yell at my wife when she was seeking clarification, when my wife was seeking clarification. And the teacher said that she was picking on her. My wife responded that she wasn't picking on her. And who else is she supposed to ask if she was our daughter's teacher? My wife then excused herself that she didn't want to say anything that she would later regret or speak out of turn. A meeting was scheduled with that teacher and the principal and my wife. No one apologized and acted like nothing had happened. And shortly after, our daughter was moved into a different class by our request. I recently inquired about parents helping with field day and was told that the superintendent wanted parent involvement, but it was ultimately up to the principal and that no parents were allowed as they were using high school students as volunteers. After I got home on the thirty-first, I noticed that my seven-year-old had her hair done. And I asked if her big sister had done it as she was one of the students volunteering from a high school. She said, no, one of her friend's moms did her hair and enlisted on several other kids' hair that she had done as well. There were multiple parents that were able to attend and it really bothered me as a parent and a pro volunteer that I was allowed to be one of those parents. It has been made very clear that if you aren't one of the principal's favorites, you aren't welcomed, informed, or allowed outside of general happenings. I feel this even more so since I'm a male and it feels demeaning, sexist, and discriminatory. I'm sure y'all are aware, but there are several staff leaving Winter Grade School and that is concerning as I'm sure is a direct correlation to the culture that has been created by the principal and the things that she is allowed to have happen under her watch. I'm glad that the survey was sent out and I hope people take advantage of the opportunity to advocate for themselves and others. Things need to change and I hope y'all will hold people accountable and enact that change. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on Zoom or please step up to your microphone if you can?
I'm sorry to talk about Little Schoolwork, but please introduce yourself. All right. My name is Melissa Brewer. Many of you still refer to me as Nurse Melissa as I just resigned in January of this year as WDS campus nurse for over five years. And I've been a community member at Winter for the last eleven years with my husband and two children ages ten and seven. I felt it was important to speak now as I noticed that the new hire of the district Title IX and affirmative action officer is on the agenda. Almost a change, but that's how I checked. I am here to speak on behalf of my family and as a parent whose child is a victim of sexual harassment and assault that happened at WDS this school year. When you fear that your own child was sexually assaulted, it is this very lonely feeling, probably the worst feeling I've ever experienced. It was difficult for my husband and I to even think about how to handle that situation, even as well-educated health professionals. We just didn't have any idea what to do or what our options were. We were told to, quote unquote, trust the process with the current administration. Unfortunately, our faith in the system was not rewarded and we ended up having to move to a different school system. It should be noted that it was a staff member that first recognized something was wrong during a guidance lesson. Without disclosing too much detail and respecting my son's story, I want to make it known that our school district failed us on so many levels. All my son requested was to not be in the same classroom as his abuser, to have extra supervision, and for a safe learning environment. That is what we advocated for. He missed a whole month plus of school while we were waiting a safety plan that did not happen until our appointed attorney called for a meeting. The school administration did not connect with the Title IX coordinator from the start, even though we were told to trust the process. Title IX should have been the first step of our process. Weeks after the school was aware of the situation, my husband and I personally connected with the coordinator at the time and they were completely in the dark. I stand here to tell you that I know my family would not be where we are today without the services of Winter Pediatrics, the Sexual Assault Crisis and Support Center, Children's Advocacy Center, High Street Legal, and Penn West Medical Health. From our first interactions and through professional ongoing support, my family and I have been able to heal. We will be forever grateful for our outside services that are right at our community's fingertips. And we wish the school system was able to provide us the same level of care. From the time that we made a report to the school and kept our son whole until a meeting was demanded by our attorney, there was no contact from our school to check on our son, except from his primary teacher and PE teacher. Our son has shown so much bravery the last seven months and is truly a hero in my eyes. He gave me permission to speak this evening. From the perspective of my nine-year-old boy at the time, he felt like he was the one that got in trouble for speaking his truth. And he still believes that today. I could tell you lots of things that weren't handled well in my son's case, but this is not the right place or time. And I will save that for a private conversation if anyone on the school board would be interested. I will continue to hold on to hope that there will be change in the response, concern, and collaboration displayed by administration and that federal laws and policies are followed in order to keep our children safe. Our children deserve more. Our children deserve a leader that will validate and help advocate and not continue to push things under the rug. The way my family's personal story was handled was beyond anything we could have ever imagined. The unthinkable happened to us. As an employee at the time, it was hurtful and I was beginning to see the lack of empathy and accountability in how our incident was handled. I hope that no one has to ever go through the frustration, betrayal, and heartache that we went through. If you do, I hope it is handled more appropriately. One suggestion is to make the contact information for the district's Title IX coordinator easily accessible along with the electronic form. The extremely sad part of all of this is we know that our son's case was not an isolated incident. I appreciate the hard work and dedication of our school board members and school staff. And I look forward to hearing more about how our district plans to incorporate education and practices that will benefit our students and families that are victims of sexual harassment and assault. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter to keep our kids safe and protected in and out of school. If you have any further questions in terms of you may call or email me. I also, I also have the address of that and I can also email it to you. And I have a couple printouts that I printed out.
Please do. Okay, very much appreciated. Are there any other comments from folks in the room or on Zoom?
None.
We'll close our public comments section and move on to our reports. Starting with our superintendent report.
Okay, I did not send out a report in advance. Just I have a number of things to talk about, but they're on, they're on the agenda or added to the agenda or we're already on the agenda. So the only thing I want to do is to recognize the Winter High School staff and Jay and his staff for outstanding graduation. Also want to thank Mr. McGlaughlin and Chair Percy Lawson for attending. That was a small class, but a pretty awesome class. Ceremony went really, really well, so I appreciate that. You need to take two minutes to talk about the financial report. The, I've spent a lot of time with Ida a little last couple days. A number of different reasons, one of them is on the agenda, we could talk about that. But trying to wrap up this one year ninety twenty-four and some work that we need to do. But you can see that at this point, the three of the areas are over. Transportation continues to be way over and the school administration line is over. And I explained that before. And the system administration line is over primarily because of higher than expected fees for attorneys, which I never encountered before, but it was just back in the year. So we still, those are some of the changes that we made today with Ida. We'll be able to restore some of that money that we, in nice shape with you. We can purchase things out of the transportation line that we need to reimburse that line. So that will still be over, but by not nearly as much. And we should be in good shape to be able to balance all eight articles at the end of next month, which is when our fiscal year ends. Any questions on that because I've lost my appointments and stuff? Okay. The appointments, we are appointing Alexis Vasco Lees as district Title IX and affirmative action officer. Donna Freeman is the special education's integrated assistant. We have new cores technology infrastructure specialist. Gloria Armstrong is technology hardware specialist. We have a number of resignations and as I showed you before, for a number of reasons. The Trinity Pearson is designing principal nutrition worker. Sophie Stabler, grade two teacher. Kirsten Syed, a high school social studies teacher. Anna Wilkinson, grade two teacher. And Warren McDonald as a guidance counselor at grade school. There are no retirements and we do have one transfer, Haley Fletcher, from grade five to grade two. So this is where you will be filling a grade five position, not a grade two, another grade two position.
Thank you, Jim. Move on to the school board to hear reports. I'll start out with our survey that just went out. It's a comprehensive survey on a Monday. Thank you to Megan and thirteen for putting that together. I know that is time consuming and we appreciate that effort. I'd just like to encourage everyone to fill it out. Having to report that as of yesterday, I heard that a hundred and six people had filled it out already. So that was a pretty good response, more than I had anticipated. And then also to speak on graduation, I did attend the high school graduation on Sunday. And it was a beautiful day for graduation. The ceremony was nicely done. We had thirty-four seniors graduate, including our very own David Destin, our senior representative for the board. It was just nice to see the support coming from our administrators, our teachers, and our school board members who are in attendance. I do want to mention to our board members, our main school board association, the fifty-first annual conference is coming up. That's also the delegate assembly as well. So the board should be thinking about who to send as a representative to both of those, both the delegate assembly and the conference.
We should do that.
Okay, you can keep that on as an agenda, I know. So just keep in mind that's about a two and a half day commitment. We have delegate assembly is about half a day on October nineteenth. I'll be main school board, so this week in conference, Thursday, Friday commitment. It's two, four days, October twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. And I'll, of course, send a email out to the board so that you guys can have information. And if you have any interest, also let me know. I just want to touch base with our four goals. We didn't, I had mentioned it back in January that we, I had the desire to come up with four goals. And so I'd like to revisit that at some point. Ways that the board can support the strategic plan of our school. And there's some really good information in the main school board association handbook that I'm going to be sending you guys out as well. But just to kind of be mindful of it, we're thinking about what you'd like to see the board do. I know we had one small goal to go ahead and visit each of the buildings, which we were able to visit each of the buildings this year. We didn't get to catch two. I'm not sure if we'll do that just because we're kind of time for time, but we'll see. And just to let you know also, our new meeting schedule for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school board meetings is our cap yet, so that you can plan ahead of these meetings in your hours. And that concludes my chair report. Any questions? I'll move on to our committee reports. I guess.
Yes, we did that. We did Q L eighteen, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. We did Lawrence twenty-one A, twenty-one B, twenty-two A.
Thank you, Tim. Policy.
We did not, we did not meet, but we all, we do have two policies to work on. Three, two policies to work on which we both put on and defer. We have two policies.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Negotiations?
We are, but.
I was going to defer to you.
We're all, everything is done. Hundred percent completed except for salaries. And there is a salary proposal that the attorneys are reviewing. And with any luck, we'll have completed. I would love to be able to have a vote view at our meeting. Well, whenever it is, we have to talk about that. So we're, we're in the agenda.
Thank you. The administrative reports are on this week. So we'll move on to section five, old business, starting with our budget discussions.
So I sent out a message to the board that the town council did vote our budget down on Monday. I was very surprised. I didn't get any indication except for one council member that they were, they were struggling to support it. And the vote was three to four. And so I reached out, I reached out and I talked to Anthony, the town manager. I've had a conversation with both the chair and vice chair of the town council. I got some direction from them. And now we, the processes that we now begin, we're having to restart the process of coming up with a budget. And when we, well, whatever, I'll finish this conversation and then we'll begin the process now. And we can spend time trying to, I can share with you what I can share with you or really interesting what you might have, might be thinking. And if you're looking for me or, I don't know, the administrative team as well to make some suggestions, we could do that. The, I talked to the vice chair of the board today. There's a real hope that we can approve a budget ASAP. And because once we approve a budget, there has to be a ten-day notice to the public. And then we have to ask to go back to the town council to vote. And so we, we can try to consider some changes tonight. I have copies that I started with. I have copies of the entire budget that was presented, essentially voted down. All of the, I did not put Article eleven there, which is just a crossing guard, the other thing. So you do have all the rest of the articles. And so you can take some time tonight. I would like to take some time tonight to see if we can come up with a budget. One of the things that was of concern to at least one of the council members and maybe more was, it felt like the board wasn't following behind the budget, that the, the vote did not vote it. And I don't know that they're necessarily saying it had to be unanimous vote, but I think they wanted to go back and review that. Some of the island, I own a lot of what others had some concerns about. There were a number of changes that were made to what was sent out to the council. And ultimately, there were a number, unfortunately, there were a number of versions, but there was some information that they saw, some information, and then things changed. And it wasn't voted on by the board, but they were all, the board votes on the, you know, you don't vote on the revenue, you vote on the expenditures. So nothing that was changed, nothing that the board approved for expenditures was changed. The, and I did report this to you, we found, when we were doing some work on the over EPS number, I discovered that the, we had actually received about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in the state. So I reflected that in revenues. And I think another thing that I really can't explain, but ultimately on needs to make right is that the, when the final numbers came out that were sent to the town and printed on the website, the impact to the tax figures was four point ninety-eight percent according to my numbers. And what Reese had put together was four point ninety-five. I did notice that and I made a change. I didn't try to figure out exactly why, because it was a pretty small amount of money, one hundred fifty percent. And anyway, that was, that just, one member of the people thought that was not a good look. And just wanted us to go back. I don't think they were looking for a huge cut from the board. So, but they would like to see whatever cut they want to see presented in a consistent format. And that we go back and present it to them. They would like to see that members of the board are there. Again, I'll take some responsibility for that because I know I've given you that date before, but I didn't send anybody reminders or whatever the case may be. So that did kind of stand out. So I don't think it was anything, I don't think we were worlds apart. And I, I was encouraged by the two council members that I spoke to to try and get a budget passed and back to them as soon as possible. So at this point, it's, I'm going to say it's on the send in your face.
Thank you, Jim. Does the board have any questions for Jim? Because I know I've already said, I guess I'm curious, are you getting, as far as appeal, does the town necessarily want a cut or is it more just to put the board and then make sure that figures are accurate?
I would say there is an expectation that money be cut. But I don't think they're looking for like a huge amount of money. I, we've got this administrative team, we talked about worst case scenarios and what that might look like, and then getting more feedback from the council. Like it's, they're not looking for a huge number of cuts. I think it's really doable. They, they recognize that the board and the administrative team have done a great job. We started the budget at what really initially came in at fifteen and a half percent. Now that you know what that impact was for town, that it was huge. And we, we got that down to what was presented to them was six point two-two percent. I think if we get that number, they didn't, we actually shouldn't say that because we didn't talk about that number. The real focus was on the impact on the tax payers, which was four point ninety-eight percent. If we can get that down lower, I think we, and presented the more consistent manner, then I think we. consistent manner than, um, I think we, um, feel like we can support.
Thank you. Uh, more questions? Comments?
Yeah, I have a question. So on Article four, go an extra foot, the bill, is that all the different bus drivers that are separated out here in seven? Or they all merged in?
Uh, which page are you on?
Article four.
I'll see it. The first page of Article four. What was the question about Article four, the bus driver?
Is each section a bus driver, or are they all kind of like merged in separately amongst the seven?
No, like the, like the other, uh, parts of the budget, they are, they're all figured out. We don't separate them individually. We don't have, we don't list all of our teachers individually, or all our execs, or our administrators, or anything.
So if I want the, if I want the complete budget of like, all these blocks, I have to add them together? Like this block has salary, some salary, some salary, salary, salary each block. I don't see where it's like a bottom line number.
On the, within each section at the end, is, is the total for that section. And then, when you get to the, actually, you don't see that on here. Total for each section is in the summary article that, um, don't, this is the old one.
Okay, so all of this will be on that?
Yes.
So how far from the year is the three?
No, that's the, that's the financial report. Now, this is what was sent initially, well, it's what you guys had approved before. This hasn't changed, and, uh, this file part hasn't changed, the revenue part has changed. And this is what we have to work from in terms of looking at, making, and the other considerations for another budget.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I just need to order the, yes, yes. Okay. Um, I didn't drop the word. Okay. Um, so I wonder what our role is with the board at this moment. So I appreciate, um, that I would like to see our board support our whatever budget they decide on, and I understand that, that like something we want to get in mind. I am also mindful that we are second lowest first student, um, we have a second lowest cost per student in our, in the regional area, um, and that at high points, we're really struggling, we have a significantly lower increase than most places. Um, so I'm concerned if there are, I'm, I'm wondering from Jen, if there are pieces that our administrative team have identified upon reflection that they feel perhaps they missed in, um, editing or reviewing their budget, but I don't believe they did. But, um, because I would be concerned about any changes to our program, because I don't see that we, the numbers that we have that we presented, I understand that we need to support whatever budget we create, um, but this budget is incredibly, I, I perceive it as being rather conservative, and, um, I think that showing up at the town council, like I can kind of agree with that, and having a little bit of this conversation right now, that we can, like, answer people's questions and support that, and if they're, if you're not scared to work together, if there are things that perhaps administrators could identify that would help to, um, show good faith. Uh, but I'm concerned about, um, trying to get the budget down for the sake of getting it down, like cutting for the sake of cutting, rather than either, um, yeah, that's just what I'm concerned about. But I appreciate that sense, if the town council doesn't feel that you're supporting the budget, then I can sort of understand a bit of hesitancy. So maybe I wonder if our conversation could be about what our concerns were, so we could, um, have that conversation now, and I think perhaps with the faith, we might want to look at something, um, you guys, you know, we don't, you know, predict exact budget, so budget is something we can talk about. So I guess I'm putting that up for us, do you think about what you have to do? Or if you do get anything specific from our administrators in your conversation?
So we are, yes, we did have some specifics. I, I think I was looking to the board first, to see what the board, um, what, even people had concerns before, um, to address those concerns, so that, um, those cuts can be considered. Uh, and then if, if, you know, nothing comes of that, then I think we are prepared, um, I'm preparing to share what our considerations were. And I can tell you from my perspective, that the cuts actually, um, I think go deeper than what I'm giving a sense the council would put me for. But I, it's, uh, I, I, I remember starting this conversation with you guys, with a budget fifteen and a half percent, saying, we're not going to nickel and dime our way, um, to a budget. We're not going to save the kind of money we need to save. It's gonna, it's gonna be somewhat painful, um, and it is. If you, if, what you don't see is, there's four major increases to the budget, that through over eight hundred thousand dollars. They're in the budget, over eight hundred thousand dollars of increases to the budget. And what we asked for in terms of net from the town is three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. That means we had four hundred thousand dollars more. I mean, we're, you would've thought if we had four things that increased to eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars, you'd probably be up eight hundred thousand dollars, but it's not, it's up three hundred and seventy-three. So, you know, that, that just shows some of the work that was, was being done. So I just don't think, I guess, I feel like I got pretty strong assurances from the council members, that we're not that far apart, um, that we, we can, uh, that we can make some, some changes. But I think from my, from my perspective, we need to start with addressing the things that maybe people didn't support about the council, or the budget, and see if we can talk about some of those cuts, and, uh, agree to some of those, or agree to just support the budget as presented.
Thank you, Jen. I guess for me, um, you know, transportation, I think the vote for, I think the vote of board members was more of a transportation and not having that information. Um, but for me, as far as thinking about what cuts to make, I'm pretty uncomfortable with that, just because we really rely on the education and you, Jen, to kind of know the needs of the schools more than the board, at least, just in, you know, with the dynamic. And Smollett?
Monica's first.
Go ahead, Monica.
Thank you, uh, thank you. Yes, um, so you will remember that, um, we expressed, Ivy and I expressed our concerns, we wanted to have more information about transportation needs of it. At that time, uh, Mr. Hodgekin, you, uh, told us, uh, I believe, um, if Brines was away, you didn't have any way to get that, and you wanted to go ahead and approve it without us having that information. I would like to see that break down, um, so that we can look at it. I also asked for a comparison, um, between, you know, what it would look like when we were not running the whole shebang, and we were not, um, what was, what was the amount that we paid out to have that service contracted out? And how does it measure up? Um, I, I would really like to see those numbers first.
So those numbers that you talked about, or that, that Ivy asked about a few seconds ago, I'm not, I've never seen in nine years as superintendent, four years in this profession, I've never seen that level of detail, um, what every person is making, how many hours they work, um, what they get for, for, not that I'm, I'm reading on the video that's reading, but I don't see that. We have, we can tell you, Josh can tell you, can tell you right now, how many employees he has, how many full-time, and I can tell you that, we have two full-time, um, but you're not going to see, I've never seen a report, I can't, I'm almost fifty-five. I've never seen, this is what you get, um, line by line, and any of the lines feel, um, unacceptable, then we can look to cut the line. The, uh, so, we can come back to that, and Josh is here, you can certainly address those questions if you want, in terms of numbers, uh, what goes into making up that. So I'm understanding this a little bit better now than I did before, and that type of information is not readily available to, uh, to, to a school board, it never has been. Um, and as far as the comparison, I presented this information to the board before, that the cost, even what it is now, and that's a huge increase to twenty-four-two thousand dollars to the, uh, uh, transportation, is less than what it would've cost us, and I have a proposal, anybody who's, is welcome to come look at it, to, uh, to Northeast Charter, what it would've cost us for the ship, gave us a three-year proposal, and this is still less than that, or, or very much equivalent. This year, the reason it's such a big increase is because, uh, this was the first year of the program, we didn't really know exactly, we, it was, uh, well, first of all, there was a couple buses that we, that we purchased, and we didn't plan to, um, out of that, so we're not budgeting, so we're not at all surprised it's over. However, that lot, that budget is three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars over with one month left to go. What we're proposing next year with the, um, twenty-four-two thousand dollar increase is eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. It's still less than what has been spent this year. So we, we spent eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, and you, you have the financial report, that's what I sent to you tonight, and you have this document that says transportation of buses has spent eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars this year, and next year we're requesting eight hundred and fifty-nine, uh, I'm sorry, that's wrong, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, um, and, you know, that's, uh, that's, it's a big increase, but it's still less than what Northeast Charter was charging us.
Jen, do you happen to have the numbers for Northeast Charter, that, that proposal off the top of your head?
I don't, because you have to go, you have, you look at it, and there's multiple pieces to it. There's a baseline, and then it's a charge. Josh, you don't give me a plan of that at night, can I?
I don't, I don't have it either.
Well, it's no different than any, than any other contract we had before. There's multiple pieces to it, is what I'm saying. So there's, there's a base, there's a base, plus X amount of dollars, and then there's a per trip additional cost, and then there's a number of different trips that, um, are involved in, that, you know, we, we have athletic trips, we have co-curricular trips, we have field trips, uh, we have all those things, and we pay, um, Northeast Charter a pretty significant amount of money in addition to the base, base amount, um, to, uh, to help their service.
And just to clarify, and with the board, is the board asking for a specific breakdown of individual salaries? Because I haven't heard that tonight. Uh, what I'm hearing is they want to compare and pass the Northeast proposal versus what we have now. I understand that that is remaining in place.
So I did go back and watch some of the old board meetings, and it was clearly stated that our transportation department was one of the largest increases in our school budget. Um, most of the school meetings, we did have the information, because Josh was still trying to put that information together, so we never really got a, a breakdown, except for bottom line numbers that were still questionable, because of that. You've made, you haven't made, but the administrators made, um, some cuts to positions that a lot of us were in favor of having, um, that would help our students, though it was noted in the media that, um, the school board made that decision.
And just to clarify, this is, um, not transportation, just having a, 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 a policy.
So I, I think that when it comes to reducing the budget, that's one line that we really get to break down or go over, and see what areas can be cut.
Right.
I think that's really important area to go over.
So I, I just wanted to ask, because you're, you and Monica were the two that didn't support that, I'm telling you right now, that we're, what we're budgeting is pretty much the same as we budgeted, I mean, as we actually spent. So what transportation actually costs us this year is pretty much what we, what we put in place. Again, I mean, I, I agree, the teachers would be nice to have, but getting, getting our students to school is pretty significant as well.
And I would see why it would be such a hard time to sit down with us and go over some of the information that earlier requested.
So I, I didn't know until tonight that you wanted to see the Northeast Charter, and I don't, not sure that it can be calculated, but we can calculate it. Josh can tell you right now, how many employees we have, how many full-time, how many hourly, can we give all that information, which is the same information that's available for any other class of employee that we have. I don't know why we want to treat the bus drivers any differently than they do for our employees.
Jen, I just want to provide some clarification. Nobody's asking for particulars. I don't, I don't know why words would be in shared, um, I haven't really said much. I didn't say what exactly I'm requesting. I didn't say anything about proposals from Northeast. I just think this is an important budget line, since it's one of our largest districts, increase, um, which was stated clearly in many of the school board meetings, it is the largest increase to our budget, and I think that's an important area, since the administrators work really hard to, um, pull back some of the funds and the positions that we needed and some vital stuff, and that's one area of the budget that we haven't looked at. And I think that it's really important to have that information and really go over it. This, we had a workshop, unfortunately, we were unable to attend, which is really hard to, you know, really go over the budget and ask a lot of these questions, because you don't have the number for us. I noticed that last year, it was the same thing, we had a workshop and we were unavailable for that meeting as well. So I, I would like to either, those of us that maybe need, or would like to go over this and see what areas we can break down, because our schools can't handle any more stuff being pulled out. We actually need some of the positions that they decided not to look forward to. Um, so it would be nice, I mean, I know I requested some information, it wasn't available concerning Swisout, um, but if he's back, or maybe I can come in and meet with you and you can help.
So we scheduled, I'm sorry. We scheduled a meeting, you didn't show up. So if you want to schedule another meeting, Josh, myself, you can answer those questions, I'd be happy to do that.
Um, wait a minute. We did talk about having a special meeting for the board, perhaps next week, to go over the stuff, but I did want to get on, because Monica did have her comments, I'd like to get her comment first, she's been reading. Monica?
Thank you. Um, yes, I just want a much higher level of specificity. And Mr. Hodgekin, I don't care if you haven't seen it in your nineteen years, if I'm going to ask the town council to spend money, a great deal of money, I want more detail than we've been given, uh, so I can understand better, you know, of where, you know, what it is I am supporting. And yes, I did ask at a prior meeting that we have that comparison, uh, between, uh, Northeast Charter and what we're doing now, but that never materialized. So the idea of coming to your office individually to go through some papers, I think, is a much more efficient way for you, or whoever does that, uh, preparation, to prepare that and present that to the board.
I'm going to, you know, so can you tell me what date that you sent, um, a request for a meeting to go over the budget? Because I never received any requests, so I'm not sure why you said that I didn't show up.
It was the budget workshop.
No, no, nope. It was, uh, I don't know if it was the date, but I know that I had my calendar when we were supposed to meet, and, and you didn't show up.
No, we never had a date. Just point order. So it's really sad that you're making an accusation that we had a meeting to sit down and talk, and I'm going through with all of this, and I couldn't pull up my Google calendar, because you obviously sent an invite to my Google, it's a three-month of the day.
No.
It would be nice if you could please provide that information, since you're saying I never showed up, because I never received any information for it.
Please remember to address questions and comments for your chair. Thank you. And so it seems as though we might need to, we don't, we don't have the information for the Northeast Charter, uh, or the breakdown at this meeting, so it might just be my typical meeting for next week, because we had discussed.
We had discussed that. I was hoping that, because the number we're looking at was, was significantly, um, was significantly. We had discussed that, I was hoping that, because the number we're looking at was, was significantly, was not, whatever. And, and I'm, I would say that I, I haven't put the budget together. I don't know how, what more information you need, except to know that what we spent this year is slightly less than what we're projecting for next year. It seems to me in the first year of a program, you, you run the program, you, you just, you tend to manage it. And that gives you, um, solid information for putting together a year two of the budget. And that's, and when I said Josh was, uh, still dealing with that, that's exactly the issue. When, when Denise was around, by the way, people can name you, say that, Denise is no longer working, um, for it to win. So, um, we currently don't have a business manager at all. Um, I didn't do the best you can to produce this document, and, um, and to get that out to you, so you have the whole budget line by line. Uh, so, you know, I'm hearing, uh, and Josh can, can share it tonight, how many employees, that'll give you the same information we could for every other, um, part of the budget, how many employees are in there, how many hours they work, um, give you a range. You can collect the budget here, this will be all the documents, anybody can look at it, and see what the range is of pay. Um, but to go a bit, so, I don't need to beat that, um, any further, because, um, I was going to suggest, and we talked, you and I talked about having a special meeting next week. Um, and I was going to suggest, and to bring up that, we are, this is a little bit off-topic, but it does apply. Uh, we actually are next meeting scheduled for June team, um, which, checked through the number of different sources, it would be a really bad idea for us to do, even though there's currently no federal prohibition, um, laws to prevent us from these Monday days, it's a really, I think it would be a really bad one. And everybody would check that to kind of set the same trend, um, that we should consider, we should strongly consider changing. So, we could, um, schedule a special meeting for next week, I think that's a really great idea. Um, and we can provide the information that's being asked for to all of the board members. And, um, and we can, we can come out of discussion, perhaps, and we can judge, because I'm at, I'm saying a special board meeting as opposed to a workshop, because when we have a special board meeting, we can, we can say, uh, discussion of, um, the budget continued, and then action. The, the public knows that we are the vote on the budget. So, I know the town council and, and Anthony are, are waiting for us to approve a budget, so that they can get through the process of, um, getting it back on the town councils. Because that's a process in the staff, that goes back on the town councils' agenda. And then they approve, hopefully, the, uh, the, the budget, and then it goes up to budget director, then it goes to the revenue. So, there will be a special reference, regardless, uh, because we're not having a budget Tuesday. Obviously, we, um, have the, for the downtown, so.
Can I take a heads-up from the board, or maybe get out your calendars? I'm looking at Thursday the twentieth, that's, that's the date after June team, um, where we could have that special meeting slash school board meeting, that's arguments to go.
We, you're at the twentieth, that, that's, you can just, we can reschedule the regular meeting, that's a regular meeting. You want to do a special, special meeting? But, but I'm, I'm just, I'm suggesting that we think about something next week.
Okay.
Perhaps a call, and then not have to do a meeting on, you know, the, the, the.
Sure. Okay, that's fair. How's the board feeling about that? Will you do something on next Wednesday instead? The twelfth? I don't think we can, we'll do that. And then it will be a school board meeting for the twentieth.
Is that a, an, or?
It's the last school day of school.
Nope, yes.
Does that have the day?
Nope, Thursday is the half-day. So, there is, that is the day of the eighth grade graduation, your trip by November. And we're going to trip. Heather?
I have a question. Um, would we have a plan, if there were to be something different about talking about it, um?
The only thing that I see that is different about, uh, who's going, this is that we would have, perhaps, the Northeast Charter figures, and maybe a bigger breakdown for transportation, which two board members are the first day of this time. So, I think it's good, I mean, if we truly want to let the town council have, and show support for our budget, I think it's good to have, to get everyone on board. And whatever we need to do to make that happen, to make, um, you know, have Monica and Ivy feel more comfortable about voting for the budget, I think that's the book, I think that's, you know. But that's what I'm hearing, um, of you, what others do.
So, I, I would say that the, that's fine, um. It's a little disconcerting, because, um, I've already heard Mrs. McGowan speak about how she doesn't care about, uh, my experience, and that that doesn't weigh in, um, that's, that's discouraging. But it, but more so, the administrators are feeling discouraged as well, because all of that information was brought to the team that puts the budget together, they've looked at the con, they know that the contract, and they haven't looked at the contract. They know what the deal is with the contract, um, and told you what the, you know, what the result is in this. If there's a real lack of trust in, in the administration, that's discouraging. So, I, I don't have any problem with providing the information to people who want to see it.
Sure, and I just, so if there's a lack of trust, I feel like transparency or giving them what the two board members want, what they're requesting, is in good faith, you know, it helps to build that trust. So, I don't see any issues with doing that. Monica, one second, I think, Tim, one second.
You can adjust it, you can adjust it.
Go ahead, Monica, uh, go ahead, Tim.
So, the frustrating part of this is, all of, every conversation we're having here, we have to get it organized. And what's being said here doesn't work there. We are going to be the lowest, um, per pupil finisher in tenement school. This is our goal, this is our conversation. And you don't understand why we're making that this level, this budget low. We're, we're still going to be low, compared to basically every school district around us. And we're talking about these numbers, it makes no sense to me. We've had plenty of time to know this information, um, in the urban public, which is now going to make it very hard for the public to vote on it. So, we're going to go into next year and make this out. Again, I don't understand our schools, our kids, we spend less every single year compared to almost every other school.
Thank you, Tim. Monica, thank you for reminding me, so, Monica?
Uh, thank you, Lucia. It's not that I don't respect your experience, um, Mr. Hotchkin. It's not that I don't respect the experience, but other school boards are run differently, and budgets are given, but they're not here to experience it with more specificity. I am simply asking, um, for what I would feel comfortable with. And to answer it, you know, the, the point that Tim brought up, the reason we're having this conversation is because the town council didn't approve the budget, so we need to go back to what we did. Simple. And what?
Um, let's do Ivy, and then we'll come up to you. Ivy?
Um, I'm going to be understanding that Jim shared with us that we need to reduce some of our budget even more, as part of the request from the town council. So, I'm just a little confused, um, as to what was just stated. And I think that's what we were asked to do, um, that Jim brought to us, that we need to look at, um, reducing some of our budget some. So, I thought that's the discussion, and I suggested, because our administrators did work amazingly hard, and pull stuff off that we really need to have, which was really hard to do. Um, and I, I think that the one area, that's why I proposed that one area, I think that we need to look at. Because our administrators can't afford to lose any more of their budget or positions or any of that stuff. Those are extremely vile, or, 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 or.
I, I'm in agreement with you and Tim about the budget, because something, we've lost space for saving up anymore, especially with, um, staff in our schools. I'm open to what the administrators have come up with, but let's hear from Tim first.
Oh, yes. This was a concern, like, I have no problem with anybody wanting to, when he started this, anybody wants extra information, they should be able to have it, I have no problem with that. Problem is that he has a board vote on this question, which we kind of, while he's on it, asks those questions. And he don't as a team agree on it, no wonder the council voted against it. It's, again, trickled back into the town. What happens here, goes back to the town. So, it just, it just creates a cycle, it's, it's very confusing to me, and I'm not sure why, again, such a conservative budget, and we're still one of the lowest, um, per pupil finisher, and we're still arguing, uh, I just, if you follow them.
Thank you, Tim. Are the administrators, are you, are you open to, are you open to sharing what they've come up with, that you, you're trying to accomplish?
So, we actually came up with, with a, um, a couple areas, but the, after getting further guidance from the council, I think the, um, the biggest thing is, I think any time a budget is failed, and I've worked in just two budgets that failed in the past, um, the thing that you look at first are the things that were added, whether things, in some cases, were things that were cut, really uncut unnecessarily, or whatever. The biggest thing that was added to the budget was three new teachers at the middle school. Um, we also, at, at the eleventh hour, added in the position of, um, Title IX, permanent back nostril. I would strongly suggest that we go instead of touching that position, because it's, um, this year, it's really proven, um, it's an essential piece. And more and more, as I talk to my, um, super-competitive friends around, big workers, they kind of deal with, uh, that position is, is no longer much, it's captured, it's acquired. I think it would save us, um, many, many, many thousands of dollars this year. And, uh, having somebody who's going to keep up with the ever-changing field, the like, the national field of legislation on this issue, um, you know, it's just essential. So, I'm going on and on, but I just want to say, I would, I would think it would be really bad. And the administrative team supports that as well. Um, if we, we hired, we approved, and you're going to soon approve, um, the positions for the middle school, and we have, not, not all three, and, you know, some of them are still being built. But, uh, we had a lot of, a big discussion, um, and Lori and Joe talked, and Lori's project administrative team, um, has agreed that, um, we had two positions, not three. And we still move her forward, because we wish she wants to go, um, and save us more than enough money that I, in terms of what we're being, um, requested or suggested, not that we're requesting, suggested as a place to get to the budget, that would, that would, um, more than suffice that. If you don't want to go in that direction, um, I think we, something that we did come to a rhythm on, the administrative team, but I say this again, I took some very interesting feedback, and I think really totally, um, misunderstood, not quite aware necessarily, to clarify that. That I offered, uh, because of my unique situat, position, situation, um, to reduce my pay, um, for, for my position. And I had said point four, position point four, um, but even if you've got a position one tenth, I mean, one day, one two, um, that would save twenty-one thousand dollars, that's no way fair enough. But, you know, if you kind of put those things together, we can, if you combine those two together, then our current amount that's being sent to the taxpayers is four point nine eight. And, um, if you add, if you reduce one unit shirt, and one day, uh, for, for my position, that actually saves, uh, that takes the impact on the local taxpayers from four point nine eight to three point five. So, it's like one and a half percent, which is quite twice what council is looking for. But I think to go into other places, and, um, and we did that, and status and this year, too, people were very committed, the budget's go through the entire, all nine, all ten articles, sorry. Um, and pick ten thousand here, and ten thousand there, and ten thousand there. To get to the number we need to get to, just didn't feel like, it's really difficult. So, even if, and I don't, I don't want to go back to our group, like, we made a decision, I don't want to go back to our transportation, but there's, even if there was something to be cut in transportation, it's not going to be, uh, the amount that we're looking for. But it might be start, it might be a, you know, a place to look at, so, um, and then, you know, you've heard me say this before, this budget is already super incredibly tight. So, um, you know, this budget's are made, the budgets are made by not, by making sure you don't estimate, oh, forward, sorry, you know, underestimate expenditures and overestimate revenues. Um, and that hasn't happened yet, but I can tell you, it's, we may have underestimated expenditures somewhat, or we're pretty close. And revenues, we're, you know, we're certainly not underestimating. We're going to be lucky to get the revenues that we're projecting.
Thank you, Jim. Just, did you say that the town council had given, had to hear, I have an idea, would be why I would see us?
Yeah, I, I would feel like I was, um, not honoring my conversation with them. They, they would not, they would try not to be prescriptive. Um, I think it was a sense of what, uh, of all parts of what can happen, you know, where, um, they felt like you could make that effort, and then presented them in their manner, um, that they could get enough support for the budget. And I think they were hoping, and again, we can go back to, hoping that we, if we had a budget tonight, it could actually be at their, um, next council meeting, as it stands now. They don't have, as I talked to the commissioner, the town manager, Wilson, um, the specific date is July, um, probably, maybe, uh, two, first and, first and third Mondays and early Monday. But they've already agreed, they're only meeting once each in July, um, and so, if we basically told me that they will, uh, do work, we'll initiate a second meeting for whenever we can have a budget. Um, we have to set a budget here, and then there, it's the interpretation period, and then take it back, take it to the council.
Thank you, Jim. Heather?
Um, I think, Ivy, I think, I think I heard what you were saying, and, um, I think, tell me again. I think what you're saying is that you, because you want to protect our programs and our victims, and that, like, this is already, you, you're hoping, you know, you're thinking that, like, transportation is a way to reduce costs without affecting those other victims, that kind of, you got, you know, what you're, I feel what you're.
Because we have already cut so much, our administrators have already cut so much.
Right, right, right.
I think that's one area that we can try and look at, or at least people from the open-minded will look at that line, since it seems like it's been so stupid for me to be able to look at. I think that's a really important area to discuss, but that's what we really need to, for how we honor that. So, what are budgets for schools?
So, I wonder if, if, if we treat the transportation component like we do with the schools, and we can ask, um, and now we're going to speak to, sorry, what?
Transportation director?
Josh. Josh. And like, we, like, again, I don't feel like we need to know the degree of size, that's my personal. And I think you're more intimately involved in it, so it probably, like, can be different, like, just like, like. Like, when somebody talks about math, I know about mathematicians a lot, and you know about mathematicians a lot, because we're the, this is a conference. Okay. Uh, so, I wonder if, um, if there's, we could ask that, like, Josh, you see that there's any way to cut, like, transportation, so provide the services that we have, and we could hear back from Josh. And I, right now, was kind of, I, I would really like to not cut any programming. I, I don't want, I don't want to go through that. I, I know we had a conversation about Jim cutting the day. I, I think, I think what I'm hearing is two things. We want to have a conversation in the board in which we can get behind a budget, and have people's questions answered, you know, go back, is this the absolutely, um, best budget that the pension? Is this the absolute best budget that the transportation director can out there? If so, yes, great, we just want to really check, because we don't want to do anything with the programming. And then if we can say, you know, Jim takes a day, goes to four kids, and then go back to the town council, but we're behind this. Because I, I would not be comfortable with a three point five budget. I, I, I am not at all comfortable being second lowest. I, I, I don't want a credit teacher in a place that we need a teacher in a building that we really want to have appropriate number of adults per student standing reading in their learning at the middle school. They're really important role moments. So, I'm, I'm wondering if, provide information, whatever information people need, but really going back to, say, like, just like we do with administration, so like, I think this is the best budget, and it's been presented to us, and so we can say, is this the best budget? Yes, it is. And then we can have a conversation about, to go back to town council, if I'm ready to get behind, this is the transportation budget, it's the most streamlined and efficient that it can be. And then we can discuss a four kids, if that is something that you can knock off some chance and then go back to the town council, but can we all get behind it? I guess those are the two things, it's like, some gesture could create financially, I don't want to teach programming, and then that's something that all the five of us can get behind.
Thank you Catherine. Jim?
First of all, I just want to say that, I don't want to retract some of the things I said earlier, but the reality is this, the documentation that's being requested is our public documents. So whether you're a board member or you're not a board member, people can ask for that information. So I would gladly provide it. I would gladly provide between now and the next time we meet, a workup of the proposal from Northeast Charter. What I, what is not readily available is, is more detailed. And I guess I'm not quite understanding what detail breakdown of the transportation personnel costs. I'm not exactly sure, I'm not trying to argue, but I'm just, I'm not sure exactly what's being argued in there. And see what we can find in terms of providing that. You can?
Well, I'm going to see. I, I think, I think we're going to have to do that, we're going to meet anyway, so why not just provide that all at once, present that. So if I'm hearing what you're saying Catherine, you'd like us to, and Lori would feel by this, and actually to all of us, that we try to find some other way to make up that, that money. And what I, what I got from information between the time the administrative team met and tonight, was more guidance from the town council leaders. So, I feel pretty, pretty good about what they're asking. And as I said, they're, they're not asking us to get to three point five. But, so if you're asking us to do something other than look for a staff position so we can move forward with our, at least the staffing numbers, then I, give me, I have a week. We can spend some, I can spend more time with the administrators and come up with, with more specific recommendations. And it might be, although I, I'm struggling right now as I sit here to say, hundred, yeah, not a hundred. You know, ten thousand here, twenty thousand here, thirty thousand here. And for me, I, I just want to say this, and I'm not making a plea. I'm now in a place that I don't need to make the kind of money. And so, when I said I would do four days, I got some backlash from them, which is very hurtful. That's really just trying to help out. And I said, as long as it's me doing this job, and I've got, for the last week or two, I've got a lot of support from a lot of places, people coming forward, I think, concerned that I'm not getting the support that they would like to see me get. And, but it would work this way for me. I, Monday was a vacation day. I'm trying to work with, because my contract says I have to work with Alicia. So I worked with Alicia to figure out some, some vacation days, because I had, I still will not use. Last year is the first time in forty years I used all my vacation days. This year I will not use them all, and there's just not enough time left unless I took every day off, which is not going to happen. So, I don't care about that. Monday wasn't a vacation day for me. I did came to the town council. I'd looked through the other days that I have scheduled, and calling will say, we can't schedule something that day because it's vacation day, I don't care. I don't mind working. I, I don't mind doing that. I can, I will, I, it was said that, you know, that people didn't, somebody didn't want to support, reduce my position because they want more work from me, expect more work from me. I think that's not knowing all the things that, that, you know, that I do, or how other people feel about the way I do the job. So, I, I'm offering that up, and, and I stand by that, and so, Monica.
Thank you Jim. Monica?
Yes. Thank you. So, here's my response. This is case in point for why it would be helpful for the board to have more detail in the breakdown of the budget, all right? In my opinion, not filling, going, going two positions instead of the three needed positions at the middle school is a non-starter. I, I would not, I would not consider it, I would not support it. The same with the idea of having less time from the superintendent. At some point, indicated, you know, that it's something that you've given some thought to. At some point, you are not going to be superintendent, and at that point, if we have been paying a fraction of the salary of a superintendent, we're going to need to ask for a budget increase. I don't want us to be in that situation, and I believe that we need a full-time superintendent. Now that being said, I know that the middle school is looking at some, you know, much desired and, and some needed technology, right? I would rather see that slated for another day than give up that sort of position of teacher, you know? And if we can get to where we need to be by ten thousand here, ten thousand there, I'm fine with that. I don't just, I do the same, I don't want to lose, you know, academic time for our kids. But if we can look, given the detail, that we need to be able to understand what it is, you know, where these things are in these very general categories, then we can cut and not cut teachers and not cut a superintendent that we would just have to, to ask back again when you're no longer in that position.
Thank you Monica. Does it afford any other questions or comments regarding the budget discussion?
I have one.
Yes.
I'm not sure that I have clear direction when you're asking for this.
Well, I think for the board, we're, you've agreed to provide us with the information regarding our East Charter comparison, and for the breakdown that Ivy was requesting. And then, looking at having a conversation on June 12th.
So we'll call for a special board meeting on the 12th. And I, I want to say this now, just in case some people are thinking about that. I'm not necessarily saying we don't have a meeting week of June 19th, I'd say we shouldn't have it on the 19th. But if we feel like we, we can look at, you and I can look at any other business, it needs to be on a special board meeting. It's only called special because we publish the regular agenda meetings. Anything that's not that is either a workshop or a special meeting. We can conduct regular business on, at a special meeting. So, if we can put all that stuff that we would have put on the 19th meeting onto the 12th, then on, at the 12th, we can decide whether we need to have the regular meeting changed to a different date or not. So it's, it's not a given, I'm not saying right now that we just go with the 12th, and that'll be our second meeting in June.
And technically, it would be a special meeting anyway, because we've already, I think the board supports the idea of not holding a meeting on Juneteenth, is that correct? So then it would be special anyway, because it would be something outside.
If, but however, if you, if you just change a regular meeting by a day or two, you can still call it shit as a regular meeting. This is not a regularly scheduled meeting, it's not an adjustment of a regular meeting. It is, or within a day or two, it is a special meeting, it's a special notification and such.
Thank you for that clarification. Seeing that we have no more comments from our board members, we'll move on to old business, the bus discussion.
Okay. Josh and I did meet with the members of the EPA last Nerds Day, I believe it was. And had a really, really good conversation. I'm going to read basically what I've, what I've written, and then Josh can add, that might be more helpful. We had a Zoom meeting with three members of the Environmental Protection Agency regarding the issues that we have been having with the electric buses. Specifically, I asked about our, what our options would be if the school board felt they did not want to put them back into service. That was my very, that was my specific question. And I felt I was directed by the board to look into that. I didn't, I didn't feel like I was told that the board didn't want to put them in service. What were our options if you chose not to? Conversation was, I thought was really good. The EPA was, was somewhat aware of the issues that we're dealing with, were appreciative of hearing directly from us. They shared that this, this trouble is not common across the country with electric buses, even with Lion buses. It does seem to be more focused on the, I don't know if this was the right term, but there were a number of buses that came off the assembly line at about the same time. They all came to Maine. And Maine is, it does seem to be a place where this seems to be an issue. So, they felt it was expected that we put the buses back into service, especially as they are under warranty to vet them, to, to use the buses, and because they are under warranty and make sure that we can, we can use them. They want us to stay in contact with them regarding any further issues, in which case they may, they may look at what they can do to address the issue with these buses. They suggested putting up to two buses, the buses back into service over the summer and into the fall, and then work the other buses back in later in the fall or sooner. I know that we have at least one driver who is chomping at the bit to get back into an electric bus. We, they, they talked a lot about also understanding that, and I think, I don't know if it works in your mind, but I, anytime you have a new vehicle or something, the, the critical failure, I'm not sure that's the right term, losing power could happen with a diesel bus as easily as an electric bus. So, it's not totally out of, out of the, you know, the picture. And they suggested, they said, there's a reason that warranties are in place, that it's not uncommon in the automobile, I mean, in the industry, that new vehicles often come with things. And I will just say, Josh would say, well, you would all agree, because you've heard the stories, that the array of things that we kind of deal with were, were, were very disconcerting and very discouraging. And two of the buses, in fact, never made it to service, ever. They had window issues which led to leak issues, and as Josh has said a bunch of times, water and electricity don't work really well together. So, that was, that never got corrected until they got sent back to the factories. And so, you know, they basically also reminded me that, reminded us that we have accepted one point four approximately million dollars worth of equipment, and that we have an obligation to run those buses or we'd be in violation of the contract with the grant. So, they stopped short in telling us that we have to put the buses back into service, but they did say that not using them would be a violation of the funding agreement. We could be held liable for costs for not using them. If the, and they will, the government will show up at some point. If they, I said, so what happens if we just park the buses, unplug them, because we're not going to spend money on electricity, and just never use them? So, well, when they show up and your bus is three years old, and it has, you know, five hundred miles on it, then that's, that's not going to be okay. That would be, that would be a violation. And it was a very positive meeting, so I don't think they wanted to say, well, this is what would happen, not happen. They did not, they, they did say they will continue to explore options if the buses continue to have issues. And they didn't rule out the possibility that they could hold Lion accountable, and, and the issue would be essentially, and they're, Lion is holding themselves accountable, honestly. They've been very responsive, they've, they've come and done the repairs. Those types of things. But I said before, giving them back after not having it for three months and having them immediately fail, state inspection was, was very, was a tough pill to swallow. But I, I've been asked several times, I was asked earlier about how I felt, you know, if I was confident putting them back in, in service. I'm not sure I would choose the word confident, but I would say this, if, you know, I have four children, would I put my bus, would I put me on it, first of all? The answer is yes. Would I put my children on it? The answer is yes. I think they, we've had more than expected issues with new vehicles and new vehicle issues. But I, you know, as the EPA said, they're under warranty, and, and ultimately, they, even in the critical failure, you know, there was, it was very, very difficult, and Josh is a big, strong guy. But it was difficult to, to get that bus where it needed to be, get it, you know, safely stopped alongside the road, as a matter of fact. You put it into a snowbank to stop it, you know, the last time, so. So like, the question is, is, I, I think the board was in agreement, I don't think we voted, I think we just unanimously agreed that to take them out of service at the time, send them back. They're back now, and I think there is an expectation that we put them into service. Not over the next week and a half. But we, we do a lot of, a number of trips over the summer that we're planning to, to do anyway, with the Y, for instance. And that we use those buses, that we use our drivers who are full-time to maybe drive them. I would be happy to, to drive with myself and vet them as much as we can. I, I think we would be, I think we're being fairly, clearly warned that there's an expectation from the grantee that we use the buses as they were sent to us to use.
Thank you Jim. Does the board have any questions?
Okay. I do have some questions, and I'm with you. I, you were promised that when they came back after having all of these issues, you met with Lion, Josh met with Lion, you were promised to have buses in good working order. And having them come back and not being able to pass inspection drives a huge blow, and a blow in trust. They didn't pass inspection. And they're new, like, they're new buses, so. I think it's interesting that the EPA would then, you know, they're saying we're not making good on our promise or our obligation. But they didn't make good on their promise to bring the buses back in working order. That would be real safe. I just, it blows my mind, absolutely blows my mind. So, they would then, I guess, I guess we're. That they would then try to pull us accountable for our end. It's just, I guess, I'm not understanding, so.
I respond.
Yeah. Ivy?
Um, you just provide a little clarity. So, when you kind of stated to them that these weren't good, is that when they came back to remind us that now we're in breach of the contract? Was it a kind of intimidation type thing, or?
Yeah, it wasn't that kind of conversation at all. I think they, they first listened to our request and said, we don't really know. It's never been asked before that, you know, we, the, we paid the money to Lion, so how would, I don't know. They didn't, they said, I don't know how that process works. However, to, to kind of hopefully address your question and yours as well, I think there was sort of a sense of, we need to hold Lion accountable, so we have a five-year warranty on the bus. We need to make a, make good effort on our part to put the buses back into service so we can see if Lion is being good on, on their part? Josh, you want to say that?
Yeah.
They, and they weren't, they did say, ultimately what I'm saying, that you do have, when you agree to accept the buses, you agree to accept the buses that say they you agreed to accept the buses, you agreed to accept the buses saying that you would use them. And, you know, we kind of said, yeah, we said we'd use them because they would be safe. I don't know if I've already said this, but the buses failed inspection, they were none of, they were not major issues. And then Josh arranged for the state police, who did the inspections, to come up with a Lion technician. And all those buses are currently inspected, they all passed inspection, they're all whatever. And Monica had a question about if our electric buses passing made inspection. I don't know if we know that is. We know ours are now, they passed inspections.
I was asking about, I was asking about ours. If I may, Alicia?
Yeah.
I think it would probably be a good idea for the board just to run this by our attorney. If we don't feel that the buses are safe, if there's residence by the board to put those buses back in to use, and I, for one, feel resident, if the rest of the board feels resident, we should have a conversation, a big conversation with our attorney or with the government grantee of the program, just to ensure that we don't have liability. I can't imagine that we would, but I would feel more comfortable if we checked that out directly.
Thank you, Monica. Jess?
So, can I once again say, we've done, the people who you char, who you charge to do this job, the Director of Transportation, the Superintendent of Schools, have talked to the Department of Education, and they have their attorneys there. The, we talked to the Environmental Protection Agency, and they, they gave us their guidance. They're, I, if you want to continue to pay lower fees when you don't want to follow the, what I've been, you've tasked us to do, then you can do that. There's nothing to stop you from doing that, but that's, again, another example of what we're talking about. And I have to say this because I'm the one who stands up here and speaks. I'm not speaking on behalf of Jim Hodgson. I am on some level, but I'm speaking on behalf of the whole administrative team. You guys spend lots and lots and lots of money to make decisions and then second-guess them.
Thank you, Jim. Does the board have any other questions regarding the buses? Ivy?
I'm just a little concerned, because we had two separate incidents where the grates failed, one with some middle and high school kids on there, and then a separate incident with Josh, I think, who's riding, if I'm correct?
It was in the same day.
It's the same day. Same, same vehicle, same day.
So, it is a little concerning. Thank God that the bus was going really slow with the kids on it when the grates failed and there was snow on the ground. But that's concerning, and then concerning when they come back and Lion said, these are great, ready to go, and then we find out they're not. There's lives on these buses, these are people's children, knowing that the grates failed the first time with kids on it?
Grates didn't fail.
Was it a, was it a... Critical failure. The electricity went on the bus. It was a critical failure?
Right. It means the power, like, power steering and power brake, the brake, it's not called power brakes, what is it? Whatever. The brakes didn't have the regular power. It doesn't mean that when they, it takes more energy to push, or effort, whatever, to push that, but grates did work.
I really don't want, I don't want to defend the buses, so I am with you on that concern. But I, again, you also, am I correct that you shared with us that you had essentially a critical failure or loss of power with the diesel buses?
No, critical failure, but I had an issue with the bus, but I still had braking capacity.
Yeah.
So, with the diesel buses, I heard that it happens as well in that comment.
It's under you though.
Oh, Monica, okay. One second, Monica. How, okay, so I know also Lion buses across the world in Maine, there's been lots of issues, multiple schools, we're not the only ones. It seems that our buses, the Lion buses that we received, tend to be, have had worse problems?
I don't know, Josh didn't hear the question, but I don't know that we've had worse problems, but it does...
We also had four buses versus...
Well, we also have four, nobody else has more than two.
Right.
I think one other school has two, and then the others all have just one.
Okay. So, how, are we, with the diesel buses, and we have new diesel buses as well, are we seeing issues with those, or?
Well, three of them we just got within the last...
So, we've been driving them?
Right. We have them. We have them.
And all seems to be well? Okay. Josh, did you want to speak to, uh, the board?
I'd be delighted if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you. And Monica, we'll get to you.
So, just to clarify about the braking question, first of all, and that's what I was just actually speaking with Mr. Hocke about. If there's a high voltage failure in the Lion vehicles, there is a 12-volt hydraulic pump that automatically kicks on and takes over that produces some hydraulic pressure in order to be able to operate the brakes in an emergent fashion. Doesn't provide the same level of braking force, at least in my driving experience, wasn't even close to the same level of braking force that the primary braking system provides. So, it isn't as if there was no braking system at all. It's just that when you go from, you know, relatively, let's call it a routine operation, to suddenly kicking over to an emergency backup system, it's almost like when the power was out at your house and you put your generator on, you clearly don't have the same capacity when running off a tiny little generator that you had if you ran off the empty power. Keep in mind as well, as far as inspections go, there, with school buses, there's two different levels of inspections that have to occur. The state police inspection was the first one. We've got still the main state inspection, which is a little confusing, because one is done by a member of the state police commercial vehicle inspection team, the other one is done by a licensed mechanic. So, just like all of our personal vehicles have an inspection sticker on them. So, with school buses, the only difference being those have to be done every six months. So, state police put their seal of approval on them, and that was done the day that he met, the inspector met with the Lion at that mission. There are still, I believe, off the top of my head, I think there's two of them that are due for mechanic stickers as well, so those are gonna have to go. And the two of them haven't expired yet, but all four of them are essentially either due or shortly coming due for mechanical inspection stickers as well. And just to clarify, it's essentially the same process that they go through, it's just a check and outs. Basically, it's a second set of eyes within each vehicle. I think that was, was there someone else? Somebody else have a question?
I think that could do that. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, no problem.
I am curious, so before the...
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
You asked about the new diesel buses and issues and so on and so forth. We've had zero issues with the diesel buses. We were very fortunate to be hooked up with, with crashing orders. They have been a fantastic provider as far as getting us the inventory, getting us the vehicles, making sure that they're road-ready and ready to put in service upon delivery. They've also had, we've had great luck with their service team as far as warranty coverage and things like that. But for the most part, we haven't had any issues to speak of, other than a couple of little sort of adjustment type of things that they've had to take care of over the past several months. The three buses that we got on emergency funding, we just picked up the last one last week, and that's now in service as well, going well so far. And then I think the other, the question that was, was kind of being asked was about, what's the difference between a failure of, a critical failure that we're saying, between a diesel bus and an electric bus? One of the biggest things is that the diesel buses, at least our diesel buses, all have air brakes. So, if you're operating a vehicle with air brakes, your vehicle has an air supply, and that, by nature of having an air supply onboard, that allows you some degree of time to be able to bring the vehicle to a controlled stop, which is sort of the scenario you had with that air supply. Even if the vehicle has essentially shut down or experienced a failure, you've still got air onboard in a tank that you can use to stop the bus. So, that's kind of the diesel version, if you will, of the backup braking system. The difference being, you're using the same air and the same air pressure, so your brakes essentially feel the same and perform the same for that kind of emergent stopping period compared to what I have experienced. And again, maybe others have had different experiences, but what I experienced is that when the failure happened in the electric bus, the braking system performed differently. It was a different feeling, a different response, and that was sort of the concern.
Thank you. Monica, did you have a question for Josh or a more general question regarding the buses?
No, thank you.
Okay. You don't have your hand raised anymore, so you don't say?
Yes, awesome.
Okay, thank you. Josh, do you feel confident in putting either yourself or other bus drivers, your drivers, back into seat?
I can speak for myself in saying that I'm, I'm willing to take the buses out and use testing, you know, sort of on-road testing with them, on range or on-road testing, as they say. Keeping in mind the fact that when we got them back, obviously, we all know they didn't pass their inspection, we haven't done any formal sort of road testing with them yet, other than taking them off the tractor-trailer, driving them, you know, less than 100 feet to the bus area. So, I would like to, and I'm confident enough in, in my ability to drive and confident enough in the vehicles, because I've spent a lot of time training on them, I'm confident enough to be able to take them out and do some on-road testing with them. I think that that'll be a good sort of next step before we even consider, you know, transporting children in them. I know that in the meeting that Josh was speaking of, the EPA suggested that perhaps we use them over the summer for a summer program, but personally, before that even happens, I would like to, myself, be the one to go up and actually do some on-road testing. And I'm willing to do that as long as, again, everybody's kind of on board with that and without the transform of students and so forth. I think that might be a good next step, because again, right now, we have no empirical data to be able to say, no, they're working great, or no, they're not, because they haven't been on board yet.
Thank you, Josh. Jim?
I just want to add that, and I've already said this to Josh, but I want to just say publicly, I would do that as well. I mean, I think most of you are aware that I'm a licensed bus driver as well, and I would be very excited to learn how to drive the electric buses and put them through their paces.
Thank you, Jim. How is the board feeling about taking that next step with having the buses being used by either Josh or Jim to test them out?
And just, also just to throw out there, I'm quite sure that some of the bus drivers would be confident enough to do the same, to do some hard testing with them, just to build some more confidence and some trust, or, again, whatnot, to kind of, you know, just to figure out where we're at with no students onboard.
Okay, thank you. So, Tim looks, he's a bigger, I am on board with that. Catherine, I have yours.
I'm not comfortable.
No? Okay.
Well, if something failed, now we're looking at you guys getting hurt, and then if it goes into another vehicle or pedestrian walking, that's another concern. So, with all the issues that we've had, a lot of back and forth, different information, it's really hard to say, yes, let's do it, for myself.
Thank you, Ivy. Monica, did you want to weigh in?
Yes. I, I, I tend toward what Catherine is saying, very concerned about it. I guess, if other members, well, again, just with the point that she made, I wouldn't feel comfortable having Josh test them out at the point that Catherine just made about, you know, endangering other people potentially on the road. I have, I have to, I have to follow with Catherine on this thing.
That was Ivy, just to let you know, just for that to remember. Thank you, Monica, for weighing in. Okay. So, I think at this point, Josh has what he needs. Thank you very much for speaking. Moving on to our new business, I'll entertain a motion to approve the summer hiring authority for the superintendent.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor? Monica, I don't see a vote from you. Okay, thank you. So, that is unanimous. We have a 5-0 vote and one from our student representative. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll move on to, or I'll entertain a motion to elect Andrea Millich as the Winthrop Middle School Social Studies teacher, that's for sixth grade, beginning the FY25 school year as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
That can do.
Discussion. Can we have someone speak?
I'm really excited to have Andrea join our team. She's an experienced social studies teacher. Her enthusiasm just fills a room. She's all about student relationships, working with families, inviting families, and really has, is part of our goal and vision for the middle school, to really work as a team, collaboratively, inviting people in, sharing the learning of our students. So, I'm delighted that she chose to come to Winthrop and is looking okay. So, I'm very excited to have her. I think she's gonna be a great asset to that team, but also to the entire middle school and our community here and like that.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Is any...
To Lauren.
Oh, hi, Andrea.
Hi!
Would you like to say anything?
Sure. I'm so excited to be joining the middle school and the wealth of community, and I can't wait for the call.
Thank you so much. Okay, all in favor? All right, we have unanimous votes. Welcome aboard. We're very excited. And Lauren, don't go anywhere, because we have another staff member here. I'll entertain a motion to elect Joseph Manis as a Winthrop Middle School Health teacher beginning the FY25 school year as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Excited? And...
Joe is an experienced health teacher as well as a phys ed teacher, so he actually left teaching health for this current school year and took a position as a phys ed teacher, and he has that dual certification, and when he came into the interview, he said, I want to be back in the classroom teaching health. He's passionate about it. He actually shared with us an entire spoken sequence of what to do, how we would do it, and looking at the whole child and really looking at that social-emotional learning, physical health, nutrition, and encompassing that, and looking at the developmental stages of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, wants to be a part of the team. He actually also is a coach for us in Winthrop, so some of the students and families already know him. And again, just a positive and passionate about what he's done, and is bringing to Winthrop, you know, how to help feature at the middle school for several years, so he's bringing some experience with him in both the area of phys ed and health. So, I'm really looking forward to our almost student health team with our phys ed teacher, our nurse, and our violence counselor, and the health teacher all working together for student support, and really looking at every aspect of student life.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Is Joseph on?
He's on.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, we have unanimous, 5-0 vote with our student representative also voting. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to elect Mark Sparks as the Winthrop Middle School Social Studies teacher for eighth grade, beginning the FY25 school year as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
So, Mr. Sparks comes to us, actually from Wisconsin, and we had the opportunity, he had worked intern and then was a stay-at-home dad for part of this school year, so he wasn't working full-time, and then he was missing it, so he started studying. So, even before he applied, I had the opportunity to work with him in the school, and he had to study in social studies. So, it was a really nice opportunity to get to know him that way a little more informally. But he is an experienced social studies teacher. He taught in Wisconsin. He also has a degree in special education, so he's certified that way as well, so he's not only certified for special education, but social studies. He has served as a dean of students and athletic director, so again, very involved in student life and what it takes to make a student successful in the middle school. And he is very calm and laid-back, and it's really nice. It was just a really nice conversation, or that interview with our committee, and everyone felt very much at ease with him and... everyone felt very much at ease with him and thought that he would fit in really nicely with our team. And looking at the students that he will be working with directly, especially that grade level, a perfect match. And a lot of depth of experience and knowledge in the field of social studies.
Thank you very much, Lori. All those in favor? We have a unanimous vote with our board and our student rep. Thank you very much. I'm excited for you.
Thank you.
Six point five. I'll entertain a motion to elect Christina Swenson as the Windsor High School Assistant Principal beginning the FY25 school year as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So move. Seconded.
Discussion?
So I think Christina might be on listening, but she just sent me a text message and said, "Can you just tell them how excited I am to come to Windsor and the Windsor community?" So I said, "I will do that." Christina's coming to us from Somerset Elementary School in Hartland. She lives in Stowe, Oregon. She has over 20 years' experience in education. Her experience is across all grade levels, elementary, high school, the adult end, and she's also an adjunct professor at the college level. She has five years of administrative experience and a lot of her background is the literacy[1179.81][1179.84]interventionist. And some of the words that were shared when I did references was that she's the whole package, how dynamic she is, and that she's a great thought partner. And I know she's, like she said, very excited to come here and to be a part of our community. And when we did the interview process, there were 13 or 14 of us on the interview committee. And as soon as her interview was done, the first words out were, "She's amazing." So the staff is very excited to have her join us, too.
Thank you very much for sharing. Did she want to speak, Christina? No, she's in the, okay, perfect, didn't agree on the spot. Thank you, Jolene. All those in favor? We have unanimous vote once again. Thank you so much, excited for you. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to elect Emily Thibodeau as a second grade teacher beginning FY, the FY25 school year as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So move. Seconded.
Discussion.
Thank you. Emily Thibodeau lives in Turner. She currently works at Spruce Mountain Elementary in Jay. She has a year experience as a long-term sub. She also has a year experience at grade five and two years' experience at grade three. And again, she also has some connections here, which is what led her to come here. Staff who currently work here, she was looking for something different and they were like, "Oh, my gosh, come to Windsor High School, it's an awesome place to be." And she came and interviewed and was very excited to be coming onboard. She has been described as being a team player, hard worker, friendly, welcoming, and very passionate about what she does. And we're very excited to have her join us also.
Thank you.
No.
Okay, thank you so much. All in favor? That is also unanimous. Thank you, Jolene. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Windsor High School Drama Arts and Music Clubs field trip request to New York City on April 18th through 21st of 2025. And we did receive in our school packets the outline of that field trip, the activities that we need to place, and then, do you have elections?
No, wait, Mr. Duke.
Okay, Mr. Duke, please step up. Oh, did I not mention it? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I interrupted. Thank you, Christina.
So move. Seconded.
Okay, now the discussion, sorry about that.
So this is an annual field trip that our art and drama students are going to be taking. They're fundraising to go fund this trip. And because it's in New York City, they're going to be working with an educational tour company to be able to make sure that all the live visit insurance are placed and also to be able to make sure that they see all the things that they want and need to see. So keep us really looking forward to doing this. So the staff who are putting this on are really excited to make this happen for our students.
Thank you. Any discussion? It may have been in the packet, but I may have not, I may have rolled it. What was the, was there fundraising or crowdfunding?
There's going to be a fundraising proposal, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Perfect, we have unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to, okay. Yes, I'll entertain a motion to elect Ashley Lenoey as the Windsor High School Social Studies teacher beginning FY25 school year as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So move. Seconded.
Discussion.
So Ashley comes to us in more of a non-traditional path, currently working at Dorton Academy as a special ed tech, has also been a rail specialist. And works at Hanford as a shift leader and in customer service. She's a Windsor graduate and wants to come home to the roots. We have a lot of interviews and a lot of great candidates and she really blew the committee away with her commitment to really wanting to come home. Very passionate about history, somebody who I think, you know, brings a veteran presence to our social studies team, a couple of young gentlemen that we have already to run out of that team. Someone who went back to school after some life things and got her teaching certificate a little later than the non-traditional route and is now back in school, getting her master's degree in education. So just somebody who, I told Mr. Hodgson today that I've interviewed a lot of people in my career as an administrator, and she's, she really loused me as one of the, was one of the ones, it was just her passion and dedication to come here. So we're really pleased to have her.
Thank you very much. Does she want to speak?
Ashley would love to speak.
Sure, I just wanted to say thank you and I'm really excited to be home.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Yep.
Monica, okay, thank you. We have a unanimous vote, welcome onboard. This ends our new business. We'll go ahead and open up our public comments section to anyone in the room or anyone on the Zoom. Okay, seeing that, we will move on to the suggestion, suggested additions to future agendas by school board members. Okay, seeing that, we will move on to school board comments.
Alasia?
Yes. Sorry, Monica, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
That's all right. I was very concerned, very concerned hearing the two parents who spoke earlier, who obviously had really negative experiences. I'm not sure how as a board we might address that, be responsive to that, what that might be for a future agenda item, but I don't want that to go unnoticed. It's certainly very serious and a situation we need to look at as a board.
Thank you, Monica. Oh, go ahead.
Since David, I'll continue the tradition that you guys have these for right now. Tennis finished up its season, boys tennis and girls tennis. Boys tennis finished up with a loss to win in the playoffs, but I got this gem. But overall, a great season. I know the girls feel the same, great building year. I know baseball rallied back in their match. They did eventually lose, but I know they had a great comeback. I would like to extend.
Thank you, Joseph. All right.
Alasia?
Yes.
I also just really want to express concern about the appointment, I'm not looking at the objective playoffs deal, but, so we have a Title IX officer whose contract, and I want to publicly express my concern, although our dean elected to school is wonderful, I think there's inherent conflict in having her serve both as part-time dean and as our Title IX officer since inevitably she would be in that capacity asked to investigate those who are, who are her seniors.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, at this time, we're going to move into executive session, so all of those who will stay here for that may do so. So there'll be no action, so everyone else please.